We'll call this Scottsville work session Monday, March 4th. The invocation will be given by Gary Stewart and the place of allegiance will be given by Voice Scout Troop 18 from the First United Methodist Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Voice Scouts, for doing that. First item on the work session will be Beverly Carswell with the radon.
I always thought I had 15 minutes, but let's see if I can get it done in five. I'm gonna flip through this quickly, but this is from our Pennsylvania friends, but it's my favorite.
Radon is a radioactive gas. It has no power, no limit.
To understand it, and the guys in Pennsylvania worked really hard on this, and so, like I said, it's my favorite. Going ahead, tonight, I wanted to explain to the council what radon actually is. I worked with the Alabama Department of Public Health, with the mammography program and the radon program, and Jackson County is in our high radon zone. So, it's become my job to teach Jackson County that there's 15 radon zones in Alabama, which ones are high. And for that, Jackson County does fall under that. So, I gave to each council member a test kit. These are provided by the EPA for us. I have extra kits. I'll be happy, I brought plenty with me if anybody here tonight, when we finish, wants more kits, I'll be happy to give you one. But this is gonna explain tonight, I wanted to explain what radon was, and then, I'm gonna plead to come back again and discuss how it affects the council here in Jackson County. We're pushing for an ordinance with the building code. And Mayor Potter has met with me and your building code officials and what we would look for in the building code, and that we'll go over a little bit in this video. Like I said, you'd rather watch this than listen to me.
No taste. Radon gas results from the radioactive breakdown of radium, which comes from radioactive breakdown of uranium, present in all soil and rock. When radon enters your home, it increases your risk of lung cancer. Radon gas is present in soil and rock. It can move into your home through basement concrete or dirt floors, through basement walls, and through cracks that may be present. Once radon enters your home, it too breaks down into radioactive particles that float in the air. These radioactive particles are called radon progeny, or radon daughters, which mix with room air and are then inhaled into the lungs. Radioactivity results when the nucleus of an atom spontaneously emits energy. An atom consists of relatively small negatively charged electrons revolving around a central mass called the nucleus. There are three basic types of ionizing radiation: alpha, beta, and gamma. An alpha particle, which consists of two protons and two neutrons, is the most biologically damaging of these ionizing radiation types, and is the radiation of primary concern when dealing with radon and its decay products. This is a magnified piece of plastic painted by alpha particles. It helps to visually demonstrate just how damaging radon can be to the cells of the human body.
On actually explaining to you how we can affect radon in Jackson County. I'm here to talk to the council, to get them to look at codes. There's an appendix F, which is another part of the slideshow, on how we can adopt the codes and go ahead and build radon resistant. And I brought my example in. I asked Mr. Brickley to come with me. He's your local mitigator who actually, if you have questions about this at the end of the night, that will be Mr. Brickley, not me. But it's showing how the pipe would run, how he would measure, and how this would be incorporated into taking the radon from your home. Another meeting night, I would like, I have several of your residents that I think would come in and explain to you in the area exactly how high the radon is here in Jackson County. And get them to come in and explain to you how it would've been nice in their radon homes to have already had the mitigation placed in the home, opposing having to put it in afterwards. But I'm gonna stay and make sure that I have to stay for any questions. I'm not going anywhere tonight. Mr. Brickley agreed to stay and answer any questions that the citizens might have and the council. And with the council, I gave you your kits, and I gave you a whole bunch of information in there, hoping you might look at it ahead of time, but if not, when I come back, I was gonna explain each part to you. And the kits are provided by EPA. They're free, they don't cost anything. You just place your kit in your home tonight. It sits tonight, you turn around, you mail it, don't throw your box away. It goes right back into your box, and it's self-paid, ready to go. But like I said, I've got an example up here. Anybody tonight afterwards, if you wanna ask, I'll be happy to explain it to y'all, too. Thank y'all for letting me come in tonight.
Next item is the fire burn ordinance. They were gonna come up some ideas and talk about those tonight. So, all been open enough for discussion.
Mr. Brightcaven spoke with me, I think he said he'd spoken with several of the other council members. He really had some good points and suggestions about things that we need to do for the residential zones, and the commercial, industrial, and agricultural zones. I haven't talked or spoken with anyone else about it, but I think we need to look at that and then see, we need to try to put that in the form of an ordinance, you think, Mr. Kenner? I know there's been some concerns with people burning things they shouldn't, and smoldering for days and days, and also burning more than one pile of debris or something at a time, and he had some thoughts and suggestions about that, and also about making sure that proper permits were issued, that the fire department closest to the area actually went out and looked at what was going to be burned before it was burned, until then that's some of the problem. That's just kinda some of the things that he spoke with me about.
Did everybody get a copy?
I didn't.
I don't know if I checked.
Lot of care, I met Mr. Bryant, and we came up with the zones, which is what, you've got a copy of the residential, commercial, industrial zones, and agricultural zones, because each zone, I felt, required different requirements. You can't require someone the same exact thing in residential areas as commercial areas, depending on what they're, what they're clearing and burning. But at the same time, we tried to include distance from occupied dwellings if they're going to be burning in a residential area, as well as if they're going to be burning in a commercial or industrial zone, but it's not included on this sheet of paper that we have here, but including a distance of, say, 100 feet from, if you're in a commercial zone, burning close to a residential zone, you need to be a certain distance from that residential zone to be clearing in order to be allowed to do that. Of course, I think anything would be allowed to be inspected by the fire marshal, and if they feel like it's not safe, then they have the authority to put that out, so.
And too, we don't charge for permits. Either it's just individuals or businesses or whatever, just need to make sure that they do get the proper permit. Another thing, too, was burning residential fires should only be allowed to burn between daylight and dusk, and I think this is good, too, if you don't go off and leave something burning, take a chance of getting out of control after dark, it could cause some serious problems. So, he had a lot of good points in this, and I'd like us to just all look it over and get Mr. Kenner, see if we can come up with an ordinance that will be what we require in the city, and that will work for us and for our citizens.
Having just received this, I haven't had a chance to read that. Is any of this information addresses a burn curtain thing?
Well, I talked to Mr. Bryant about the burn curtain, and of course, that wouldn't be included specifically in the ordinance. Now, what he would say, that he would encourage the people to do either chip it, basically, if there's something that they should not be burning, or that would produce so much smoke that would, you know, create a nuisance, then he would encourage them to either chip it, call it off, or not necessarily require a burn curtain, but that would be an option that they would have available to them. It would not be required in the ordinance for the day.
So, you're saying the ordinance wouldn't require, no way we would require using this burn curtain there?
No, now, I mean, of course, issuing the permit would be, still up to them to issue the permit, to allow them to burn it.
So, they could say, you're not gonna get a permit if you don't use a burn curtain? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's a lot of factors that would go into him assessing whether or not, I wish he was here tonight, I don't think he is, but I think there would be a lot of factors that go into requiring that, such as, what are they burning? Whether it's stop screen material, he would suggest that breaking it up into a smaller pile, or letting it dry out for a period of time, that's, again, something great to kind of address.
If there's any remote possibility that it's gonna require, could require, this act, and I think it requires more discussion than that. From what I can understand, the people who, in other places, who bought these pieces of equipment to use for rem, don't do it anymore, because the people who rent it don't know how to use it, and they burn it up, and they lose money. So, if that be the case, now I understand the concept, or some other places, they're developing and building their own to minimal getting by the ordinance, but really don't do what you're supposed to do. And it appears that they charge a heck of a fee to use it, so I, that's the only hangup I have, is this burn curtain thing, and how are we gonna do that?
Well, the reason we wanted to create the zones is to try to eliminate as much of that as possible, because if you're in a commercial zone, you're given a lot more leeway versus being in a residential zone, and the proximity to homes in the residential zone.
So, if it's in a residential, and my neighbor's putting out a one acre lot next to me, Al Chuck's gonna do a suggestive chip, but there's no requirement they could chip it.
Well, he could, he could make that a requirement. Well, not necessarily.
Because if it's not an ordinance, you can't. If he can suggest and then require, it's two different things.
No, Mr. Kenner, we include, it was undermined pressure when I spoke to Mr. Bryant, that we include something that, all of this was subject to the approval of the fire marshal.
But the other thing to realize is that Chuck is not always gonna be there to be the one to make this file, it could be the officers on duty, so then you get, it's subjective. I just think the more you make it black and white, the better, I feel.
It's gonna have to be like, oh, it's gonna have to be an ordinance, say it, then how's it?
Say it, or you don't, yeah. But...
I think, from my conversation with Mr. Bryant, what I've seen other cities do, they give the fire marshal's office some discretion. I don't know if you can write something absolutely black and white that says, "This is required for any type of, or a certain thing." Unless we get into, you have it as saying that one of these machines is a certain type of machine or equipment. If you're gonna have it all.
But I guess my question is, if we don't have some type of requirements, we're nowhere off now, we won't be nowhere off then, than we are now, because it's, burn it if you want to, and the neighbors gonna complain, and, I mean, I just don't, I just think it's gotta be spelled out a while, more, I guess, I would say.
One of the things, this has just come through the wave scan of Mr. Bryant's materials, and I wish he was here, too, is the definitions that are given. At the current time, under the draft ordinance, if I lit a cigarette outside, I was lighting a combustible material. That's what's on the ordinance. Technically, I need a permit for the fire department to smoke a cigarette. Or technically, I need something of that nature to have a grilled steak. You know, that's taking things to the ridiculous, and that's what black and white can do to you sometimes. One of the things this ordinance does is establishes a minimum square footage in each unit. That's one of the things I hope y'all are gonna be looking at, how much you can block combustibles without having to go through a permitting process. Should, you know, y'all are gonna need to make your minds up if you want to have an ordinance, but if I have one square foot limb or twig pile in my yard, do I need to call them to get a permit? Even if there is no permit charged, or fee charged, y'all need to determine what that square foot is going to be, and other zones decides residential. Or are we just going to ban it completely? And it's, we're in an area with a lot of gray, I'm afraid, I don't know that you can do some black and white things, and it's sort of like saying it's illegal speed, but we're not gonna enforce law here in Applewood. It's speeding, you know, but...
I think this thing was born out of the problem of the gentleman who came, his wife had the asthma, and, you know, I think that's really what this thing set out to address, whether to maybe get all the things that we've kind of gotten into, I guess. Chris, is that correct?
That's what I thought it all about.
You get some complaints about leak burning, you don't get that many, but the big complaints is those big, huge, one acre tracts or whatever, that smoke for three or four or five days, and it rains on it, and just smoke hangs over the neighborhood.
Right, what they do is, you know, figure out all these places, dirt and everything else, and they, they just huge piles of it, smoke and smoke, and that's what...
The thing is, you can't put that out.
No, you can't.
You know, it's just gonna smoke, so. I, I think that was kind of intended, I don't get kind of perceived what this was going to address, so I don't know. I guess it got to a whole lot more than what I realized, I don't know. My biggest concern, Mayor, and, and, again, it goes back, I, I'm pretty good with the whole thing, except for the having to use this burn curtain thing code. It reminds me of 40 years' worth of dealing with record companies. You think about it, we require a car be towed in, well, we have no say so on what they're charged, but it's the same thing with this burn curtain thing. If you get two or three companies that have that thing, we require them, and we, so they have to go around from these two or three companies, if they can charge any amount they want to, and if, so we either pay the amount, or shut down the business, because they can't dispose of this stuff, except for the street department, which we don't wanna do that. And/or that homeowner could pay someone to haul it off, and I don't know that that's any cheaper than the burn curtain, I don't know the answer to that. It's according to how much that burn curtain's gonna cost you. And again, it's also according to how much the haul allowance gonna cost you. Yeah, I don't know those numbers. There's no limit on how much they can charge for all this stuff. Other than that.
Well, and I think that's kind of what, the way that we were looking at it, was, you know, the homeowner, we want Scottsville, we want it to grow, or I think that's the consensus, that we don't want them to be gouged by having to go out and rent an air curtain, or the city to go out and buy an air curtain, just for the social purpose of that, but, you know, we wanna make sure that it's, you know, healthy for the citizens to live, close to some places being cleared off. Safety, I guess, would be the first priority, but we also wanna make it conducive for Scottsville to grow as well. And I guess that's where we, where we are, but...
And if we're really serious about it, if we wanna do something about it, we might just have to hire a couple of people, pick the first part, that group, just move this, if it's to be that big, if it is. Just like we do others, but, you know, we pick up garbage, and we haul off limbs and brush and leaves and all this stuff, and maybe we can expand on that a little bit. And I don't think they can handle it right now, or what they have, but I think we may have to look at that.
Anybody else have anything? I guess we'll go back to the drawdown ordinance.
I don't think we're the ordinance.
No, no ordinance.
I need y'all to let me know if you want a new ordinance, or just an ordinance that addresses this particular kind of funding or initiatives. The original drafts I received from the fire marshal for two ordinances that will basically redo the entire district, so I assume that's where it's coming from. Y'all let me know.
Next item is the catfish festival request for funding. Mayor?
Is Johnny Johnson in here, or anybody with the catfish festival? It was Mr. Johnson that came to the last work session and requested some funding. I don't think he gave an amount that night to just help support the catfish festival, which is probably in its, you may know, 12th, 15th year, or something like that, several years. Hanging at the, at the Jackson County Park, and it's part of the Small Business Council. He didn't give you an amount that night, but the impression I got from talking with him and a couple others, you know, they were like around $1,000 to, for you to support that, that effort, so. I think it'd be very helpful with that, if that's what you wanted to do.
Need a discussion on, need a discussion there?
Mr. Kenner, we could make that as an appropriation just to that group, right? Or, have we done that patch group, do you know, just an appropriation to this, to the Small Business Council? Just make it to them, okay, to go towards that? Have we done it before?
We have actually done it in the budget to the mayor.
The discretionary?
I'm just gonna get out of this discretionary fund.
Mr. Mayor would love to see it as a budget.
Put it on the agenda.
You can put the other thing you brought?
The crazy in? No, it's, it's coming, yeah, it's on down the line here.
Next item is the RDS contracts. Mr. Williams?
Yes, so you own your company, your packets, and a group from RDS Outpacks, and that team collects our sales tax for us. They also do audits, periodic with businesses here in town, and also audits for businesses that are located out of town. This is something that's coming up, and if you take a look at it, or you actually put it on the agenda every day, if you yourself take a look at it, just wanted to get it out there for you, so that you could look at it, it's not...
It appears to be standard out tax for contract RDS, kind of like this particular one is for rental taxes. It provides, you know, for fees, it's a three-year contract, and appears basically standard. Other agreements we have with them, we have had with them in the past.
Don't put it on the agenda for tonight? We're even waiting to be over.
This is, they, they audit different businesses, companies, whatever, that pay tax to the city, and they go and do their, the audits. I've had, in the last probably year, I've had a couple of businesses, company owners, corporate owners, that have come to me dissatisfied with the RDS audit services. They said that they were very unprofessional, they were, they felt they were not as competent as they should be, and one person in particular said that what they did was wrong, was incorrect, they had to go back and prove that they were right to not have to pay penalties and pay fees. So, my only concern is, if we're going to hire them to do this, then they're representing us in what they do, then they need to be competent and professional, and basically that just means they have to do their job.
Mr. Williams, how about if y'all just think about it, and I get representative from RDS, and address you, and then they can address your concerns.
How many people do they have, Mr. Williams? In a year?
They select audits themselves. We don't, as council or the city officials, we don't select those, so it's just random audits. It could be anywhere from 20 to 20 people. It just, based on the size of the audit, you know, just maybe your small mom and pop, they might get a random audit, and then it might be somebody as large as Walmart, or those here, or some company like that, that they do audits.
I, I'm just, should be thinking, when you're dealing with people, a couple really isn't a lot, if they, if they do a lot of paperwork, you know, but, what I'm saying, if someone has a complaint out there, I wish they'd come to the work session and tell us, so we can make a better decision if it needs to be made, but I, I suppose I've heard about anybody.
Next item is Sheila Washington for the Scottsville Voice Museum.
Good afternoon to Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to request a funding. I guess y'all heard Scottsville's back in the news again, but in a positive way, this celebration that's taking place in Montgomery, and it should happen this week, maybe to build my path and become law. I have with me tonight Loretta Stevens, who's passing out what we have at the museum that we give, and Dr. Tom Reedy, who is a historian and an advisor to the Scottsville Voice Museum, and he's gonna speak, and Loretta's gonna speak. And what I'm standing here for, to let the council and the neighbors know that Scottsville's been spoken in a positive way today. We had telephone calls, there's four ways, London, England, and one calls to me, and Attorney Steve Kenner got a call, and BBC Media from London is calling about the exoneration, and they will be here next week to film the museum, and to visit Scottsville, so the word is out again about Scottsville, and we hoping to shed light in a positive way. And the amount that we're asking for is to do things, to hand out groceries, to upgrade some things at the museum, and to give a little to, to our school children to come. We've had students as far as the way at St. Louis to come, visit the museum, Skyline City Schools, Odyssey Schools, different ones to come, so we want materials, books, information there when they come, that they can have on site at the museum, and upraise the things that we do need. And at this time, I'm gonna let Loretta Stevens, who's our secretary of the museum, come and speak, and after her, Dr. Tom Reedy, who is a historian.
Good evening, Mayor. I've been affiliated with the museum for, since 2010. I've been affiliated with the museum for, since 2010, and I have seen a great deal of interest grow in the museum over the past few years. We've had a number of visits, we've had several groups come in, we have a group that's had an annual visits for three years in a row. This year, or last year, brought a group of sixteen students, and students travel across the country, and the museum, as I said, has been a huge interest to this group, and they come in, they bring these students, and they're interceding kids from Philadelphia, and they study about the case of the museum, and they come in and they have questions, and they want to know about this region, and about the area, and about the people here, but there's really just an amazing amount of interest in the case. We've had groups, this summer, we had a group from Stevenson, they brought in sixteen kids from their summer Twenty First Century Program, some of you may be familiar with that, but these kids studied about the Scottsboro case before they came, and in the session with them, the kids were just raising their hands and just brimming, just to share what their views were on the case. So, a word of mouth, you know, they pass along, and then we have other people that come in and visit. We have church groups that come to visit, we had a group from Trianna recently come in and, and visit the museum. So there's a lot of interest, and there's a lot of things that we need to do in the museum, so that we can educate people. The book that I have here is from Dan T. Carter, he wrote the book, A Tragedy of American South, about the Scottsboro Boys. He's been to Scottsboro on two occasions. Last week on Thursday, he spoke in Decatur regarding the case, so, and I'm sure you've heard in the news recently that we're working on an exoneration of the Scottsboro Boys, and Dan Carter and a number of other authors who have dealt with the Scottsboro Boys are helping us to, to push that legislation, or leaning their support to that. Another visit that we had this year in January was from a group of attorneys, three different attorneys, came in, a student from St. Louis, Missouri, twelve-year-old student, working on a project in history, and she chose the Scottsboro Boys to do that. She got on the internet, she started to research, she found the museum, she called, and her father brought her to visit the museum, and they came in, they presented this to us, which is a one-cent stamp, it was a full sheet of the stamp that was used to raise money for the Scottsboro Boys defense. So I'm just going to let you all look at that, and then on the back is just their acknowledgement, bringing that to us, and they're just acknowledging that they appreciate that we're there, and I've been in contact with them, the daughter is in school, her project has gone to the next level, so we're at the state level, so they'll let us know how she does with that. We do have a great deal of interest in them, we do need the support of the city of Scottsboro.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Tom Reedy, and in the interest of full disclosure, I recently completed my PhD requirements available for a history degree, so I, in a few months, I will be Doctor Tom Reedy, but I would like to thank Sheila for conferring the degree a couple months earlier. I'm here as kind of a, I guess I'm an outsider, I'm from Huntsville, but I had traveled quite a bit with Sheila over the last two years, so originally helping her produce the travel guide that you have, and over the past eighteen months, Sheila and I have been working on the legislation that is now going through, it's now going through the House, the state legislation for the pardons, and also for the exoneration that Representative Robinson here sponsored. During the course of that time, Sheila and I probably had, I don't know, a number of dozens of meetings with lawyers, with legislators, with scholars, we met with university people. There is just this general excitement about what Sheila was doing, and since these pardons have come up, the, by my count, there have been one hundred and fifty-three media outlets that have covered this, and dozens of stories. I brought one, I'm going to read the first, if you don't mind, the first and the last paragraph, it's, it was published in the, on a Saturday in the New York Times, exonerating the Scottsboro, and it reads, "Decades too late, the Alabama legislature is moving to grant posthumous pardon to the Scottsboro Boys. The nine black teenagers arrested as freight train hobos in 1931 are convicted by Alway Juries of raping two white women. This week, the state senate judiciary committee unanimously approved a bipartisan bill that would change state law to allow the posthumous pardons. A second measure exoneration of the nine as victims of gross injustice. Final enactment is expected. This will not in any way deliver full justice to those men and their families, but it will confirm what happened in Scottsboro eight decades ago, when street mobs cheered the rapid-fire guilty verdicts. And the pardons will put a spotlight on the town's newest tourist attraction, the Scottsboro Boys Museum and Cultural Center. I'm here to suggest to you, to urge you, that you put a spotlight on this museum, that you contribute to this. There is more being written about the Scottsboro Boys case today than at any time in any of your lives. There's more scholarly interest, there's more cultural interest, you can't go to graduate history program in this country and not have somebody working on a dissertation in some way about Scottsboro Boys, it's only going to get bigger. So what, what I would suggest to do, and again, I'm Huntsville, so you have no reason to, you know, no right to suggest anything to the good people in Scottsboro, what I, what I'd urge you to do is to own this story, you know, not to do own the story. Support this museum, financially support this museum, publicly support this museum. This museum's been around for three years, like all nonprofits, it goes through all sorts of programs, it's doing okay, it's got a lot of friends, it's got a lot of friends throughout this state, it has friends outside of the state, it needs good friends in the city. So that's my pitch, I enjoyed meeting you all, thank you.
And I'd just like to say that Decatur has started a traveling museum of pictures never seen before, so they're embracing the Scottsboro Boys case as their own, and what my goal was to begin with this museum, is that the dark cloud of history has hung over this town, city, as a negative, and we can embrace this, which is already happening, as something positive, and take the image and turn it around to, yes, decades later, things are changing, and when I have people that come through, that move into business, like the Japanese people that come through with the Volvo tour, they want to know what was race relations like in the city, and I told them, it's nothing like that was portrayed eighty years ago, and it's positive, and then we have business that come through Black History Month, that bring groups of their employees through to say, you know, this is, we've been to the museum, this is the way that we teach race relations there, they come and just see it, and so many times that, you know, opened up, that people passing through, come through, so we've heard about this place, we've heard about Scottsboro has a change to it, and the answer is yes, and I feel like that North Carolina can say, while we were at the start of the civil rights movement, what I want to say is, Scottsboro was the beginning of the civil rights movement with this case because of the two-hand mark decisions handed down by the Supreme Court, and what have consideration you all give us, think on the finding that we requested, and we're available to talk again, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Washington, can I get a list of the board members and a copy of the budget?
Uh, you can. We don't have it here, we're supposed to know, but I will get it to you.
Okay, thank you. I skipped over the pool bids, I don't believe that we're ready to even discuss that at the time. Next item is the first Monday cruise in. Mayor.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we thought about the plans to have a cruise in from April through September, October, to coincide the first Monday weekend, I think Johnny Johnson spoke about that, about how successful it was in Port Payne, New Yaxton, and was trying to maybe do something similar here, closing down a couple of sites of the square on Saturday night, first Monday weekend, starting around five o'clock, going until the last, last one leaves, whenever that is, it's not a car show, it's just a place for people to bring their cars and show off, and even talk about the line of vendors to come in instead of, there will be entertainment that will be provided, and ask for an appropriation of five thousand dollars this first year, to see if we can help with some expenses with that. Since there's no one group, there's individuals kind of working towards this, I know Mr. Johnson, Brad Sharet, have, and myself have met on it, and so I'd like to see us follow through with this, and maybe give an appropriation to help offset some expenses. We would just, you know, whatever bills it was, a bill for some entertainment, or some other expenses that are associated with it, we would just pay that directly rather than making appropriation any group. Mr. Um, I had a question there about something, and I forgot what it was. Oh, oh, they're closing down the square, that would have to be done with council approval, correct? The first time, we just make it for the.
In the draft I'm working on for the new first Monday ordinance, I don't think we would do the required after that, but if we do.
Just the first time, just to do one.
First time, I think it would have to be.
So, whatever questions you may have.
As far as the five thousand, who would manage as far as, you know?
We, we would do that, I mean, just the requests would be coming to us from Brad Sharet, someone who wants to come out and some of the entertainment, so they.
Requests would be made prior to.
Yes, yes. Well, if, yeah, if you, well, if you would appropriate it, then we would, you know, just administrate it within Mr. Wilson, we'd make sure that it was the even expense in Port Payne.
Any other questions?
Did you say what hours we would?
It would start at five o'clock, and then we'd go really just whenever anybody hung around there, so, you know, seven, eight, I think, right, is that about them, um, who was the Port Payne owner?
It comes in.
We, we're already having a presence up there as a city, you know, as far as the cleanups, or the first Monday, so nothing like that extra would have to take place. We might have to have somebody up there to put us some barricades and whatnot, maybe from the street department or somebody just to hang around in case there's some problems, but that's only expense that I can see, additional expense to our budget, so.
Anyone add to the agenda tonight?
I had a lot, a lot of people who seemed to be kind of excited about this, that we're trying to do something to get some people down to town on the first Monday weekends.
Isaac Ashmore here. We'll take no rate off as well. Number nine is the Tourism Advisory Board.
I would like to propose to the city council that we establish a tourism advisory board that would review and advise the council on all tourism related to events in the city of Scottsboro, basically that has a direct impact on our economic growth for the city, and I think that it would be a benefit that we have someone special enough, we're agreeing to go forward with this cruise in. The advisory board would help us to promote those such activities, goose pond, Fourth of July festivities, goose pond colony events, Fourth of July festivities, first Monday, parks and recreation events, and any, any other events going on within the city such as the Catfish Festival and events like that. Basically, once they're established, they can kind of grow from there and then move on, and then each council member would get an appointment to the board.
Any discussion, questions? Gary, want to come up, Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. President. You, however you decide to, you're certain. I do apologize, there's only two packets there, as distributing, Dukeness, very expensive, about thirty dollars a pack. I am very warning to those people in the city that do not know me, based on the information the package presented to you, in my opinion, as a citizen, as a citizen of Scottsboro, Alabama, that this public body should not provide the Scottsboro Multicultural Foundation with any financial support without the following assurances: One, aggregate federal tax returns, and two, aggregate financial accountability of the organization. This was a problem in 2010 tax year, as demonstrated by the documents submitted to you. Furthermore, the act of an organization which intentionally defamed and slandered and another citizen, who only wanted accountability to ensure the sustainability of the foundation while serving on the foundation board of directors is unconscionable. We were defamed in the local press, without confirmation of the libel statements alleged, and further by false affidavit, submitted a legal action structurally to a countersuit, and subsequently dismissed with prejudice by the Jackson County Circuit Court. This is the reason why I stand for you this evening in protest that this city provided any financial help to the Scottsboro Multicultural Foundation via taxpayer funds in any form or fashion, and this does not mean that I do not support the Scottsboro Boys Museum and Cultural Center, as I do support and strongly believe, within all my heart, I believe, that this is an idea which stands to reverse the effects of racial discrimination in this area, in the state, and in the nation, but I do not believe it can be a sustainable organization under current management. Thank you for your time, I'm here if there's any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Morgan? Thank you.
I would like to ask something, say, um.
If I'm a friend of mine, I'm a question.
Some people live in the city, to city of Scottsboro, but we've been to court, this is unsettled, we sustain our 501(c)(3), the judge held us not accountable to anything that was brought forth by anyone that has accused us. Loretta's came in, audited our books, found no reason why this should ever went before them, or why we're in court. So our records are clean, if any of you have any questions, we'd be glad to present you all that, and as I said, the museum was here to present a positive image of the city of Scottsboro, and what happened eighty years ago to turn a negative into a positive. Although some people have other ideas or want another plans for us, but we're moving forward into the Twenty First Century, thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a five-minute recess and conclude with our council meeting.